Okay, call this meeting door, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens.
If you'd like to do roll call, please.
Okay, will do. Allen, here. Green, here. Ms. Stravich?
Here.
Rhindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Thank you. Glad that everybody's here to deny approval of minutes for the budget workshop. Mean from May 17th, the motion would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. That would not be May 17th. Tonight's May 17th.
Yep, May 3rd. Third.
May 3rd is what it should read. Okay. Okay. We stand corrected on the motion?
Yeah, both.
May 3rd. Any discussion on the motion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. We move on to city council meeting minutes of May 3rd. Again, it says May 17th, so it should be May 3rd.
Yep.
I'll make the motion. Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on these minutes? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Audience comments on any non-agenda items? If anybody is here on non-agenda items, we ask that you go to the podium, state your name and address to the clerk for the record.
My name's Melissa Matrazak, and I'm here on behalf of the Vintage Road Trip Market and More that we held this weekend. Kimberly Schoenberg is also here. We wanted to come in basically, Mayor, and thank you and city council, along with our police department and all of our other DPW, everybody who helped us out, and let you guys know the market was a huge success. We had vendors begging us, we had people begging us to do this weekly or monthly, which I said, give me a little break, maybe then, but we could not have had a better response. So thank you for all that you guys did to help us make this happen, and we look forward to doing it again.
Thank you, Melissa. We want to thank you for putting that all together. It's a lot of work. We would like to see it every single weekend, if at all possible, but we know that's not really likely to happen soon. But we, her and I did talk about the possibility, maybe someday, this could happen, and it was. It's a great activity to have uptown. It brought a lot of people uptown, and that's what we want to see happen here. So we are more than happy to support you in your endeavors, and thank you again for everything that you did.
Well, thank you, guys. We, most of our vendors came from very local, within 15, 20 minutes away. I think we only hit a handful that were a little further than that, so we had a beekeeper that was only six miles down the road that sold his honey, and a local jam person, and we had pottery people from the Port Huron area. It was just, the response we got was phenomenal, so hopefully we'll be able to enlarge it a little bit and make it a great event.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else like to address council on any non-agenda items?
No, that's it.
Okay, moving on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes? No changes. City Council, any changes? Motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order?
I'll make the motion.
I'll support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have five this evening. The first one is consideration of request to keep chickens at 35929 Diane Lane by Janet Hope. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider a petition from Janet Hope to keep 13 egg-laying chickens on property located at 35929 Diane Lane, near the intersection of Forest and Diane. The applicant was given a corrective notice when staff realized that there was chickens on the property. In conforming to how we've handled chicken requests, previously, we sent letters to all the adjoining properties, and the city has received three emails, I believe, from the two properties that abut the rear yard of the 35929 Diane Lane. So the applicant has sent emails, an email describing her chickens and the coop, along with a lot of pictures showing that. So I believe the applicant may be here tonight. We did reach out to them, that we were, they would be on the agenda tonight. High recommendations for approval.
Is the applicant here, and if she or he is, would they like to address the city council before council takes this up?
Yeah, she's coming to the.
We'd ask that you go to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Janet Hope. I live at 35929 Diane Lane.
Is there anything that you would like to add to what the city manager stated?
Well, I'm sorry, I had no, I was not aware that you were supposed to have a permit. We got them last March during the beginning of COVID, the COVID shutdown. I looked on your website, I saw nothing at the time. Could be my fault, probably was, but that's why I didn't know.
Okay, very good.
While she's there, I just do have a question, because we did have, the reason I went out looking is that we did have a report that there was a rooster. I just want to confirm that there is no roosters at this address?
The rooster is gone, and if I could add to it, like, we really take good care of our animals. We take a lot of pride in them. There's multiple neighbors that we give eggs to on a regular basis. They love them, you know, offer us money, and it's not like, you know, so it's actually kind of a, you know, it's bonded us with some of the neighbors behind us, two different houses, so, you know. They can't, they don't try to get out of the yard. They can't really get out of the yard. You know, we feed them. I don't know what your guys' specifications are for like land size, but I'd say it's pretty adequate for them. I mean, they do really well, you know. Just appreciate if you would consider letting us keep them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the petition of Janet Hope to keep 13 chicken hens on the property, subject to the following conditions. One, the chickens allowed will be female chicken hens. No rooster shall be allowed. This approval should be subject to a one-year review if any complaints are received from neighbors regarding the chickens. And three, the applicant should be limited to the existing four-foot by 12-foot coop as seen in the photos.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion?
My biggest concern was the amount of chickens. We've never allowed that many in any of our previous requests, but given the reviews or the feedback from the neighbors, they see no issue with this, so there's no reason why I should see an issue with it. If the people are living by it, didn't have a problem.
Yeah, yep.
I concur.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. I thought that 13 might be a little excessive, but again, if the neighbors that abut them say there's no issues, that's what we've gone by in the past. If there's a complaint, we consider that, but there's been no complaint. It's very obvious that the people that abut them are all for them, so.
The only question I have is, it was brought to our attention to begin with, and there was a reason for that.
For the rooster.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the rooster is the reason the city manager went out hunting for the rooster in that neighborhood, and as you've heard, the rooster's gone now.
Yes, the rooster's gone.
The rooster is disturbing to the neighbors. There's no doubt about that, so we don't allow roosters. This council at least doesn't allow roosters, period.
The thing is, is also, how many feet normally we have feet from the neighbors and stuff?
I know he did the.
Overview map.
It's in the background here.
I don't see the measurement. I, why John's looking at, I guess the biggest concern is, as a neighbor, I would not want to come and speak out against it. I would feel uncomfortable if I lived next door to Mrs. Hope, and I loved Mrs. Hope, but yet I did not like her chickens. I would have a difficult time coming here to us to tell Mrs. Hope I didn't like her chickens, because I have to live next door to her. So did all four properties say four, five, across the street?
In my email to the council, I believe only two responses, two properties, three emails, two properties.
Okay, responded, so not, we did, in all fairness, we didn't hear from anybody.
I don't know if we've gone to the audience yet.
Okay, and there's a possibility that they feel uncomfortable coming, because they don't, I know, I know, but.
We're giving them an opportunity, you know, any way they'd like to. They could even do that anonymously if they wanted to.
But like I said before, I, the way we're doing this, it kind of still structures neighbor against neighbor. And so I guess that's why I always, I don't support chickens, because I personally, and I lived in this area, I would not want chickens living next door to me.
Okay.
So that's, that's my stand.
That's why we're a council of the people. We got, we got to take that into consideration. We've had nobody who has said there's an issue with it. I understand what you're saying, Jamie, but, you know, that's why we have a city manager that's here, you know, that they can come and talk to, or phone, or email, or any way that they would like to, and request anonymity.
Okay, so they, so it is possible they could request, and they anonymous.
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely. And I understand what you're saying about, you know, neighbors pitted against neighbors. But in this case, there's been no one who's indicated anything, and we've given them every opportunity, and we sent out letters. Within how many feet, John?
Anyone abutting the property, even if it's corner to corner.
Okay.
So we go to all adjoining properties. So sometimes it's five or six, sometimes seven. Just depends on how the properties line up together, but it's always to any property that touches their property, even if that's corner to corner. So, and Jamie, Troy did it in text form versus a map, but it's the third paragraph up from the bottom of page one that has the feet from, from the neighbors, so.
Eighty-nine feet, 118 feet, 97 feet.
Okay, there we are, okay.
So he just did it in text versus a map this time.
Normally writes a map, okay.
I think because of all the maps you were getting. Again, and I would say that although I did, as we know, we went up hunting due to the rooster, both times that I drove by the residence, I didn't see the chickens even outside the coop, you know, so. I was a little, you know, when I sent the letter, I wasn't sure they did still have chickens, but, yep, they were just indoors.
Okay, I mean, I can concede to chickens. I just don't want them next door to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
Better than a barking dog, believe me.
Oh, I, oh, I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, anything else from council before we go to the public? Okay, we go to the public at this point. If you'd like to speak to this issue, we ask you to go to the podium. You basically have three minutes. We'd like you to state your name and your address for the record. Is there anyone that would like to address this issue?
No further comments.
No further comments.
No, okay. Okay. If there's nothing else, councilman? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Okay, we go on to item number two, consideration of approving medical services contract with Richmond Lennox EMS. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving the fiscal year 2021 through 2026 emergency medical services contract with Richmond Lennox EMS. The city currently has a contract with Richmond Lennox for medical services that will be expiring June 30th, 2022. And speaking with Jeff White, he indicated that he is hoping to get all the community's contracts lined up, so he would like to have us approve this, which will actually kind of take, take over the last year of the current contract, so that our contracts are lined up. Again, it's for zero dollars.
Very good. Chief White, would you like to address, well, he's already at the podium. How'd I know that? Go right ahead, chief.
Just trying to be efficient, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So, yeah, as City Manager Moore indicated, really, we're just trying to get all our communities lined up on the same ending date by doing these contracts that expire in 2026. The city of Memphis, for instance, approved theirs just last week about this time. Just for council's knowledge, in the past year, the past 365 days, the EMS responded to 794 runs in the city of Richmond. I find that to be an enormous number, given the fact that when I started here in 1989, we did 900 runs for the entire year, stretching from New Haven to Emmett. So it kind of gives you an idea of the community's growth when our run volumes are going up by those numbers. This year, the EMS will do just shy of 6,000 total 911 calls in that same, in that same area, so a tremendous amount of growth. A question I often get, which I think is just worth mentioning to council while I'm at the podium tonight, is, you know, the effect of COVID in the communities and on the EMS. What I can report to you is, in the past, well, since March 8th, we ran, we ran things back to March 8th of 2020. We had our first known COVID case in the area, actually, one of the first known COVID cases in the county was out in Richmond Township on March the 13th. Since then, we responded to 256 cases of COVID-19 that were severe enough that the people were having difficulty breathing and needed transport to the hospital. So just about four and a half percent of our total run volume for the past year have been related to the COVID-19 outbreak. With that, I don't have anything else to report unless council should have any questions.
Council have any questions, or the director at the moment?
Was that four and a half?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I make a, go ahead, Jim.
I make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2021 through 2026 contract for emergency medical services with Richmond Lennox EMS, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city. Adopting this contract will void out the last year of the current contract, which was due to expire June 2022.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Again, great service. We had earlier talked with the chief about his operation, and certainly appreciate everything that he and his staff do for our community. It's a great service. I'm more than happy to support this contract for five years. Any other conversation? Being not, oh, no, any other audience, if you can get the chief away from the podium, we can get you. This is a longstanding joke, you have to understand. Is there anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three, consideration of special event activity procession on Main Street, St. Augustine Catholic Church. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request the city received from St. Augustine Church to conduct their procession on Main Street. The event is scheduled for Sunday, June 6th, 2021, and the St. Augustine Church parish parishioners will start approximately 7:00 AM and progress on foot north on Main towards Memphis, and we will, again, have a car available to take them up at least to the city limits. This is, I, several years that we've done this event.
Thank you. Is there a motion? I make a motion to approve the request received from St. Augustine Church to conduct the procession down Main Street, beginning at approximately 7:00 AM on Sunday, June 6th, 2021, at St. Augustine's Church, and traveling north along Main Street.
Support.
Any discussion? I purposely left off that end. I think last year I did the same thing when they walked. We're not authorizing them to walk all the way to Memphis. That's not our authority, but certainly to the northern city limits. I'm assuming there was nobody in the audience for this item?
No one.
Okay, thank you. If nothing else, council, hope for a great day. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of special event activity, 2021 Richmond Seniors Barbecue. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to conduct, or consider a special event request from the parents of the Richmond class of 2021 to host a barbecue for the senior class from noon to 3:00 PM on May 19th, 2021, in the pavilion in BB Park in that area. The senior class has a graduation rehearsal that day, and the parents would like to offer the seniors a location to go to after their traditional drive-through town with their decorated cars. They will go back to the BB Park at the pavilion, and the parents will have their grills or use the grills that we have there to cook hot dogs and hamburgers for the class.
Very good. Is there anyone here from the senior class barbecue event? No?
No one's here, no.
No.
No, okay.
No.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve a special event request from the parents of the Richmond class of 2021 to host a barbecue for the seniors from noon to 3:00 PM on Wednesday, May 19th, 2021, in and around the pavilion at BB Street Park.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion?
Is this the first time they've done this?
Yes, pretty much. They used to end there sometimes, you know, after they ran up and down Main Street and stuff and got crazy.
Well, I'm just, I'm excited for it, so.
This is the first time the parents are doing the barbecue portion.
Yeah.
They've often, as the mayor's, have gone through town with their decorated cars.
Well, yeah, that they've gone through town, so it's kind of, it's just fun to celebrate and make it official.
Yeah, the school, the school told them they couldn't.
You might want to guard the pool, I'm not sure what.
Make sure that we have, at least an officer that could drive through there.
Yeah, yeah. If, you know, you know, hopefully you have a great turnout, but we probably wouldn't have enough tables there. If tables are needed, Good Old Days would allow the tables from the Good Old Days grounds to go over to the pavilion.
I'll contact Janet and kind of get a ballpark there and get with Good Old Days. Thank you.
Those gates are open. The gates are open for.
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion? Any audience participation?
None.
Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of the sale of the 2013 Taurus Police vehicle. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving the sale or retention of up to three 2013 Ford Taurus Police vehicles. We have discussed this item during our budget workshop and are recommending now that we sell one police vehicle, allow one to be utilized by the DPW for an admin car, and keep the one that is not stripped of police markings and equipment to remain with the police department. And I believe the motion is actually written that way, so.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the sale of the one 2013 Taurus Police vehicles, and allow one to be utilized for GPW as administrative vehicle, and one vehicle to stay in the police fleet as administrative vehicle, with the understanding that the police vehicle will not permanently increase their fleet.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this? I will say council started their budget workshop, their third one today at 5:30, and had quite a long conversation on this issue with the chief and the city manager. So there's been a lot of discussion already on this item. Is there any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, chief?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Is there any other audience participation? I see the fire chief there. Maybe he would like to have that other one for, or assistant chief, I'm sorry.
I can let him kick the tires if he wants.
Okay. City council, any other discussion on this? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Mislanious matters from the city manager, sir?
Just want to kind of compliment Melissa on her event. As she mentioned, it was a very nice event, brought a lot of people to town, even when they were setting up on Friday. There's a lot of people going through town Friday night. We did have a wedding at Starcraft, so that added to the weekend festivities. So happy to see all that happening in town. Our street projects are going well. We anticipate the Ridge Street paving will happen tomorrow, and this week on Howard, they're doing a lot of the concrete removals and replacement that needs to be done, and then the paving would be next week.
Next week, okay, very good, thank you. Council comments. Jim?
I'm good, nothing tonight.
Jamie?
I'm just, again, want to thank Melissa Matrazak and her team on the success of the market. I went there both days, and both days, there were a lot of people I didn't even recognize. I mean, there was good people I did recognize, but it seemed to have brought a lot of people from out of town, and it was great to talk to some of the business owners too who were there. They were invited and they participated. Our local business owners who have storefronts but also still participated in the market to give their businesses like a whole exposure that they may not have gotten just by driving by. I really hope that as Melissa sits on the EDC, you know, we can brainstorm with her more ideas. It just, it was a lot of fun, and everybody seemed to really enjoy it, so I'm hoping that we can have more events like this in the town, and the council will support it.
Absolutely, agree with you 100%. Rob?
Nothing to add.
Emily?
I'm good, thank you.
John?
Nothing.
Michael?
Nothing to add either, thank you.
Neither do I. I don't have the, well, I do. I did, I did get the right calendar, didn't I? I was gonna, somehow I had that 20, I think you did that on purpose, Mr. City Manager, 2020 calendar here in front of me. Today being the 17th, we have an EDC meeting at 7:00 PM here at City Hall on the 20th. We have a TIFAM meeting on the 26th at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. The library will be closed on the 29th, which is Saturday, in celebration of Memorial Day. On Memorial Day, there will be a service. We will have a small parade that will meet at Washington, on Washington Street, by the Good Old Days barn, BB Street area. There will be a setup there. We are inviting anybody who would like to ride their bicycle. We would hope that you would decorate it in some patriotic way. We also are inviting registered golf carts in the community. Again, we would hope that you would decorate your cart in some way, shape, or fashion appropriate for Memorial Day celebration. We will leave at 10:00 AM from the Bailey Park, basically, on Washington Street. We will go up to Main Street. We will head south on Main, which is not the tradition. With COVID, we felt that we should make a smaller parade length and much safer. We will be going to what we call our Veterans Park, which is between Maniachi's Hall and the yoga business, right there at the city municipal parking lot on Main Street. We will be closing off Main Street between Water and Monroe, so there is plenty of room for people to spread out. We will have a speaker that evening, as we have always done. The VFW, Richmond VFW, will provide color guard, and we are hoping that we will have the Richmond High School band also will be able to perform at that time. So we're trying to keep with tradition of memorializing those that have given their lives on the 31st at 10:00 AM, starring Washington and Main, so hopefully you can all come out. Our next regular city council meeting will be in June, and it will be June 7th, right here at City Hall at 7:00 o'clock. We don't start our summer hours until July, is it?
By and August.
Yeah, July, August is our summer hour, okay.
I'm not sure, I think this year when we adopted our schedule, we didn't do summer hours.
Oh, we didn't do it?
We flipped to July.
Yeah, we didn't.
We did.
Or did we?
No, we both.
Or we didn't?
No, we didn't. Oh, okay.
Yeah, we chose not to.
I forgot about that. Yeah, we stayed at 7:00. Okay, so no summer hours.
No summer hours.
No summer hours.
That's right, because it was too confusing.
So that is it for myself. There is no closed session. Is there any other business to be had this evening by the city council before we go back into our budget workshop? to be had this evening by the city council before we go back into our budget workshop? We'll take a little bit of a break here before we go back in. If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. There is no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us.